This town. Board meeting for November 15, 2022. Roll call, Leslie Dyer, John Young, myself, Pam Alley, Elizabeth Bunker, Debbie Down Clark taking minutes, Marjorie Stratton, Town Manager, Jake Thompson is.
On the way.
On the way, we believe he is in route, so. Uh, the agenda, number two, approve the agenda. Do we have any additions?
Well, this status report came in late. I did put it in you, in your.
Okay, so that would be under seven B, alright.
I also did get, finally get that boundary line confirmation agreement from John Crewer, remember?
Oh, yes.
We did that for John Erie.
Yes.
But anyway.
He came in at the end of the summer, right?
Next agenda, what would you like to do with them?
He's on there now.
He's on, alright, so let's put that under. Old Business. E. Alright. With it? Alright, I move, we approve the agenda as amended. Office in favor. Number three, approved minutes from the November 1st, 2022 Select Board Meeting. Second, all in favor. Uh, number four, proven sign treasurer's warrant, number 20, so moved. All in favor. Five, communications.
I don't have any.
Okay, number six, speakers from the floor. Going once, going twice. Okay. Number seven, committee and department reports appointment, 7A Vinylhaven Swap Shop. I believe there was a letter.
Should be right at the top.
I'll move it.
The only thing I see that I should address is maybe, um, caller insurance company to see if the. Volunteers are covered in some way.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
This is great. It's great that. You can drop your stuff off instead of having to throw it out.
Waste watches. In that last concern, I don't think they have anything to worry about right now. Even if it was finally agreed upon and something was built there, it would be years away, so. But I think it's pretty clear from even before the swap shop moved from the transfer station to their current location, it was needed and appreciated, so. I wouldn't do anything to try to get in the way of there being another one if they needed a new location, so.
I agree.
He volunteered and helped at the swap shop. It is much appreciated. Need a discussion, questions on that?
I'm glad it was a donation.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, she probably were giving, were leaving money, um, so we did, um, create kind of a lockbox. So that it wasn't so loose, it goes into a little lockbox.
What are the donations being used for afterwards?
They just come here and we receive them in.
Okay.
And, you know, that's why we're able to track it.
Okay.
Perhaps later down the road, if they need to find an alternate spot, the donations could go towards whatever expenses.
Well, our thought, yeah, our thought was also if somebody, um, wanted us to buy their ticket to take.
Yeah.
Take things over to.
If someone's taking things over, they should be reimbursed for that.
Oh, oh, yes, yeah.
Things like that.
Yep.
I mean, there's really, we haven't come up with any expenses so far.
Okay.
Hold on to it, that's great.
Alright, uh, 7B, Woodard and Kern, status update.
Uh, so the ship grant, uh, application went out today, the final application.
Yay.
And we have, um. Later on in the agenda, the, uh, the transfer station plans that went out, that.
They've gone out to bid, right?
Or going out to bid, I told them to move forward.
Good.
The, the EDA part of the downtown project is gonna go for review. This should go this week.
So were those the last two pieces, the ship grant and the EDA? Those the only pieces there? The funding isn't fully secured?
The EDA and the.
The ship grant, because the ship grant application just went out, right? So that's one we're still waiting on?
I'm pretty confident with that.
And the, but the EDA.
The EDA, the funding is secured, it's just, we're sending out the plans for them to approve, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So the engineers', um, design plans.
Yeah.
It's gonna go to them for review. They have 30 days to review.
Okay.
And so we'd be hopeful to go out to bid sometime in December.
Assuming there's no changes that they.
Given their approval.
Yep, okay. Excellent.
Okay, uh, let's see. We're working on the operations and maintenance manual for the transfer station.
I think the manual is going to be revised. I think I'm getting a copy of that back this week with revision ideas.
Right.
Hi, Mellie. Voice from the screen, now we can see you.
Alright, any other questions on this update in this report?
What's with the, uh, Brahms pack? I didn't, I'm not up to speed on that.
It's something that, um. Woodard and Kern is doing with the, the Legion. I don't really.
Nothing that applies to us then, right?
Not directly.
No, they own them.
We're not being, the town isn't being billed for that one, right?
Shouldn't be.
No.
I don't think they need to.
So I don't know what.
Put it on the status report then.
Yeah, I don't know unless they just want us to know what they're doing in town.
Well, I'll ask him, uh, we meet every Monday.
Okay. I mean, it's not that big of a deal what's on there, but as long as we're not, the town isn't being billed for it, then.
Certainly, we had an obligation, yeah.
I'm aware. Alright, let's move on to eight, old business. I know we have someone waiting online. Should we move to eight E? Does anyone have an issue with that? Alright, let's go over the boundary agreement.
Is that something in the past?
No, that's why I thought maybe we'd leave it until next, uh, meeting, because it just came in to me, uh, so I didn't have time to get it on the agenda.
Okay, do we?
Is it worth discussing since we have the person here, or should we wait?
Well, we don't have. He has said that he's not in any rush. John Crewer is not in any rush. He can speak for himself, but he has said that to me.
Okay. John, do you have any?
Hi, everybody, thank you. I, um, I, yeah, had mentioned to Marjorie that it's not a rush to me. I think. John Erie is, Pat, you know, he's not well, and so he has a, certainly has a different timeframe of it, but with you. Um, I just didn't get the documents, finally got the information so that I could get the documents to Marjorie just yesterday. So I understood when she and I spoke that it probably wouldn't be fully addressed until the next, your meeting in, in two weeks, the 29th or whatever it is. And the only thing I would say is you're looking at these documents when she is able to copy them and present them to you is. It is substantially the same as the document that you, um, all approved. With Erie some number of months ago, it's just a perpendicular line, um, from the one that you approved. And the, the, when we have the opportunity in a couple of weeks to go through it, I, I don't think it will take very long. Um, the, the only other changes in this boundary agreement from the one you approved with Mr. Erie. Are some things that the, uh, surveyors stuck in, which basically explains the main coordinate system. That is used to, on the survey itself to get the numbers. It's, it doesn't, it's boilerplate language. So that's, that's it from my perspective, and I would hope I can get on the agenda in two weeks.
Yes, we will make sure that is on there, for sure.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great Thanksgiving in the meantime.
Thank you, YouTube.
Yep, bye bye.
Bye.
Alright, so yes, we'll add that to the next agenda. Alright, we'll go back to 8A Vinylhaven Parking Ordinance Amendments.
So the, the changes that you asked for are in yellow. Increasing the fines and adding some sections about, um, limit, limiting parking to two hours. And, um, setting aside some spaces in the parking lot for vendors.
Aren't we gonna add something about parking on High Street for 4th of July?
Oh, I didn't think of, I didn't hear anybody say that.
I don't think that needs to be in an ordinance. We could just put up signs.
Alright, I don't know why it popped in my head, but it just popped in my.
That makes sense, especially.
Because.
They keep parking on the, you can't do it, it's not safe.
No, it's, it's not safe for pedestrians, it's not safe for emergency vehicles if they have to go that way.
And then people just pulling out after they park there, like that's just gonna create a mess, so yeah. Once we get closer to the 4th of July, I think signage needs to go up, needs to be enforced, no parking.
On either side, or?
Like coming up, it's High Street, right? The hill, yeah, like there shouldn't be parking on that.
On either side.
I don't think so, no, they're not parking spots, it's a sidewalk and property.
Is that in here anywhere, under, is it?
Across from the Legion Hall, there's supposed to be no parking. I think we should not have signs up now, personally.
Yeah, um, let's do that, let's get signs and put them up. But when we get closer to 4th of July, that should be.
Both sides of High Street for its entire length.
Yep, sorry.
Where is that?
Where is it?
Thank you.
Oh, right here, okay, thank you.
Great, so we already got it, so it just needs to be enforced.
Yep.
Okay.
And also I noticed that the, um, I was, it's Copper Street, I'm guessing. Nope, I guess not. Um, on Copper Street, we have no parking between signs, which is great.
First.
But people.
Right here.
Oh, there it is.
On both sides of Copper Street, it's about three quarters of the town.
Um, yeah, I see, but the thing about the signs, they're great, they work, but people park by the cannon, they park before the sign. So that you can't, and I think the sign needs to be moved further down to the end of the road. Further down to the end of Copper Street by the library.
Okay.
Because it's.
Yeah.
Just cut one car line, then people will park, you know, they're not parking between signs, they're just parking before the sign.
Right.
And it's. This says, within 100 feet of the intersection of East Main, there's no, um, no parking.
But, that does, yeah, I mean, people still.
Okay.
So that's why we quit signs.
Do you understand, Mellie?
No, I'm actually getting confused a little bit, things are.
Okay, so when you, when you go to, when you come down or when you go up Ca- uh, Copper, you know where.
Going past the library.
You know where the cannon is. So there's a sign by the cannon, and it says, no parking between signs, and then the other sign is up near the.
Downing tree.
Tree by the Down Easter, across from the Down Easter, which is fine, and I think that was a good thing, because it was a traffic hazard there. But there's one parking spot before the first sign by the cannon.
Oh, I see what you mean, and there really is no parking there.
And there should not be any parking.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we need to move the sign down to the end of Copper Street, I mean, it's.
What if we put one, one on the left side, uh, facing. Out towards the main road down on the end of Copper Street, and one somewhere in the vicinity of the library. On the opposite, you know, on the library side.
Whatever you think, whatever you think it is, it's just hazardous when you go to pull out or try to pull in Copper Street.
They usually park on the sidewalk too, which shouldn't happen anyway.
No, there should not be parking on the sidewalk. Hey, alright, but back to the issue at hand, does anyone have any comments, questions on the rest of the ordinance? I think the changes made are what we asked for.
Just be interesting to see how it's enforced.
We needed to make a motion to accept.
Motion to approve the Vinylhaven Parking Ordinance.
Alright, I make a motion. We approve the Vinylhaven Parking Ordinance as amended. On November 15th, 2022. Alls in favor? Alright.
Marjorie, can you have somebody send me a copy of that new one, just so I can make sure we've got everything the way we need it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, 8C, job descriptions review and approval. Did I skip one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, V, transfer station upgrades project.
So I put this document in your packet, and I don't know, I only brought a couple of copies of the, um, design. But it's essentially the same thing. If you, certainly if you want copies of those, I can make a copy. Essentially the same, um. And I sent you those in an email, um, when they came in.
Which is, this is like the last thing that we approved, right? I'm pretty sure.
What is that? That's the set existing conditions?
No.
Okay. My vision isn't that great, I'm sorry.
Is this price compatible?
Do you want me to move out of the way a little bit?
Yeah.
There was $850,000 approved at a town meeting.
Same, yep.
So it's basically the same.
Yep, it's just now where we actually get.
Reality.
Right, that's what we're gonna find out. I mean, I hope we can, because I do, I think, I know some feel we don't need to do that much, but I think this would make it more efficient and safer.
Especially when we get the report from Mellie about the retaining wall.
Well, I mean, that, that has to be done no matter what.
That was scary just alone.
Fair minimum, we're gonna have to do that, so that doesn't, alone is a cost, 850,000.
Well, I would hope not, but.
We'll find out.
There are some real, you know, real needs in there.
I, I just think if you have one way in and out, that improves, because that, it's a blind corner there now, and it.
Yes.
I mean, I go slow and I come up there, because you never know who's coming up over the hill, who's coming out. And you can make it where multiple trucks can just, or vehicles can just back up and they can unload as needed. There's an easy in way and out for trucks that have to come in and actually take the waste out.
Yes.
I think it makes sense to do this, but we'll find out what it actually costs. Or estimated to cost.
Well, it's a good chance to do it right the first time.
Right, exactly.
And you said it is going out to bed, or it's on its way?
It should be.
Since it was supposed to be done by Memorial Day this year.
Well, we'll have it done by Memorial Day next year.
I think we're making progress, it needs to be made.
Yeah, so my, one of my issues is that I really need to, um. Have a better estimate of what I need to borrow. I mean, I, we can borrow up to 850,000, but. I need to see how these bids come in.
Right, I mean, that's what, that's why I hope we could do this earlier this year.
Yeah.
But.
I have a concern on the, uh, in the future, and on this one as well, you know, where we have the actual cost associated with the building there, and that's good. But I think on any of these projects that we're gonna borrow money, we ought to be putting in a number, but we believe it's gonna be the interest charge. Because that's totally, that's part of the project cost, the interest on the loan that pays for it. And that could be another couple hundred thousand.
Well, what happens with the debt service, uh, is that that money is raised at town meeting under debt service.
Yeah, but it's still, I think there should be an estimate on any project we're doing in this magnitude, what we anticipate the financing cost to be.
It's in the, um, in the warrant article that we vote at town meeting, there's always a treasurer's statement. And it, and it has the, you know, the interest rates are pretty volatile right now, so it'll say. We anticipate this interest rate and up, up to this amount of interest, and if that's true, this is what we will spend in interest. So it's in, it's, it's incorporated into the warrant article where the 850 doll, 850,000 dollars is approved. So it's, that's, that is a state law, that when you take something to the voters to borrow money. That you have to disclose at least what you estimate the interest to be on that amount.
At the town meeting, I'm, I really must be honest, I did not pick up on that, because I do think that anytime we have.
This was actually voted two years ago.
Yeah, yeah, we approved it two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thing is, we can't, I mean, we can, we, I mean, I guess going forward on these projects, we could try to estimate what it's gonna cost, for what we're gonna borrow, but. I don't, we don't know what interest rate's gonna be.
I think we ought to be, no, give a best estimate of what they might be, because it is part of the cost.
Right, but that's, that's what she's saying, is in the town meeting, that warrant's specifically in there, like.
But even in presentation like this, that ought to be there, I think.
Well, we can't do it yet, because we just sent it out to bid, so until.
We know the number, we don't know much we have to borrow.
Right, and it.
Because if we have to borrow less than 850,000, the interest charges will be less.
Right.
Or if we raise money, you know, within the two years of after this was approved, and we don't have to spend all of it, then we would spend less again, so.
Or if it's more, we'd have to borrow more.
I understand what you're saying, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be considered, but it's, it is, it is covered. On that warrant each year, so. I mean, the interest rates we're already paying, already locked in, like you don't have any variable rates to make them to borrow, right?
Not that I've ever done.
Okay. I would, I mean, maybe now we wanna do a variable, so you can lock in the lower one if they ever fall again, but that sometimes can be inviting disaster. Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions on this one? I am interested to see what kind of bids we're getting at.
Me too.
But I'm glad it's moving forward as well. Alright, now we will go to 8C, job descriptions review and approval.
So Mellie updated, uh, three of the job descriptions. One for truck driver laborer, one for transfer station foreman, and one for the transfer station attendant.
This is just updating the job descriptions, we're not trying to fill all.
It, it is, the one.
It's just, it's just the drug, I'm sorry.
The, the one big change there is, as of February, um, to, in order to get a CDL from the, from the beginning. Um, you have to have classroom time now, you can't just study, take the permit test and go for your driver's test. Now you have to have an allotted amount of, of classroom time in an approved classroom with an approved teacher, so, um. That is making it really difficult for us to be able to get CDLs for myself, Dusty, and anybody else that. That we need to get informed, trying to jump through some hoops to see what we can do, but. It all looks like a lot of, a lot of time spent off island for each of us in order to obtain these CDL licenses.
Have you, I'm sure you probably have asked us if we could have someone come out and train all of you at once?
Um, I've, I've asked, and so far there has been absolutely zero interest in that, and I've, I've contacted several places. Um, one thing that I am looking into right now is becoming a CDL trainer, you can do a private. Like, a lot of the schools are doing it for their, um, bus drivers because of this new law. Um, they're becoming, uh, affiliated with the federal motor carrier as a private, um, CDL licensing. Place, you do not have to be open to public, it can be held to just yourselves. And if I can use Roly and Nick's CDL to back it, I may be able to do the training out here. Again, that's, I'm, I'm just, this one just came up to me the other day after talking to, uh, what, uh, Freeport, um, Middle School. So I've got some feelings about looking into that.
Mellie, there is an option to do the classes virtually with Zoom, or?
Well, some can, some can, some possibly could be online, but a lot of it is hands-on.
Okay.
Um, because you have to be able to do truck inspections and walkarounds and driving time, and then there's the classroom time as well, so. It's, yeah, it's a challenge.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's, obviously having. What, three of the crew off island to do this would be challenging.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see how we can even do that, really.
So it might have to be like a staggered approach where one goes.
It's just gonna take a long time, because the shortest class I've seen is six months.
Oh. Okay.
Wow.
It's a, it's, it's a lot to ask of anybody living on the island to. To go away this much and do this, and they're not cheap either, um, they're ranging anywhere. Anywhere from 2,500 to 5,000 to 8,000 to 10,000. It's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have any? Do we have?
We have a six, we have a 650 coming, which doesn't require, so. I'm making it work, but, you know.
That's why we're moving to the smaller trucks.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm talking to other, other public works departments, they're all in the same boat, although easier for them to have training, but. They're finding it really difficult to find CDL drivers, and a lot of them are going to the 650s like we just purchased.
Okay. Alright, well. Keep us updated, let us know what we can need to help.
I would like to ask about the, um, transfer station attendance duties. Now, I understand that the transfer station as it stands right now is not a very pretty place to go. But shouldn't there be some, uh, duty or responsibility to keep the grounds neat? And, and litter and trash picked up, that's on the fence, on the inside of the fence, and the, and the weed whacked, and. I mean, it's.
I know it was in pretty good shape.
I know it's a transfer station, but it just seems like there's not a lot of litter and.
Isn't there one in there, Pam, about keeping the trash picked up around the area?
No.
I thought there was, there should have, there should be. It was on my list of what I wanted to put in, I'm. Is it under the foremans?
Um, I didn't think I saw it last when we reviewed it.
I just don't, I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
And I know a long time ago, we discussed it a couple of years ago, uh, pre-COVID probably, that that I was upset, I mean, it just seemed irresponsible or not irresponsible, but for the town to not pick up the litter on the sides of the road from the hill, on the hill down toward, on either side of the hill. I saw the people's property, I just felt like it should be our responsibility to, to have it picked up, you know, maybe it isn't, but anyway. I was just, I just wanted to ask about that.
I don't see it on here either.
Foreman's related work is maybe required. Kind, it's not specific. So do you want to see that, those?
I personally would like to see that on the, um, in the job description.
For both?
What, what's up to, I mean, whatever Millie would think where it's appropriate. If it's for the foreman or the attendant, but certainly times when you're not real busy, you could-
I would, I would put it in the foreman's position with just as a duty to delegate that task being completed.
Oh, that, that's a good idea, yes.
All right.
Thanks.
So do you need to make any kind of motion on this?
Um, well, do you want me to make those amendments and then bring it back to you?
I think that's how we should do it.
That's fine. I wasn't, I mean, do you want us, does anyone have any issues with the job description for the truck driver laborer? We can just approve that now, whatever one's waiting to do it all.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, let's just do it all once we have those.
It's all one department, so.
That's a good point. All right.
I can have that right back to you and for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mel.
Thanks, Mel.
All right, eight D, review selectmen's bylaws. Is there any other, I don't think there was anything, a couple of small things.
What we had.
Prior?
This is the old red line one.
Remote participation.
We just made a note because what we're doing is creating a separate remote participation.
Yep.
Right.
But, um, Pam and Donald thought that it would be important to reference it in the bylaws.
Yep. That makes sense.
And then on B, we also, under section four D, we'll change it a language. Nothing major, but just move.
It was redundant, one felt it was redundant there and then down below in minutes, it kind of repeated itself.
Okay. Yep. I mean, if the chair is, the chair's going to be available at some point to appoint the secretary, so I guess.
I know, I thought the same.
How do we need to put in the co-chair, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All the town managers, but we decided that generally the secretary is the same person and here.
Yeah.
D, can you just get rid of the word as? On D, the secretary shall be as designated, can you just get rid of as? And put be designated.
She'll be designated manager of the board.
It's just, sorry.
No, it's fine. All right, is there anything else? I was starting to read over participation policy. Yeah, they were just quitting up the language. Okay.
Can we just do a final on red line?
Yeah. And then we'll adopt that and then we'll also have the job descriptions, we'll take care of that in the next meeting.
Did you have a chance to read over that remote participation? It's something new. So the big, the decisions that you need to make is when is it going to be okay for one of you to remote in? Is it just going to be, it can be just based on each member's own convenience? Or you can, these were the examples, when a medical condition makes it impractical when traveling. I mean, you can have all of these or none of these, or just, you know, this is, this is for you as a board to decide what criteria do you want to use for board members to be just on remote participation?
I think it should just be at the discretion of-
Well, definitely, we don't want it to become a habit for people to just say, I'm going to stay home, I don't feel like going, I'm just going to do remote. I like the fact that it says members of the body must be physically present for public proceedings at the public meeting location. And so for, I think that's important, we keep something like that, but then when remote particip- participation is authorized, you know, what, I mean, clearly, if you're traveling.
I mean, the first three seem like, fine.
Right.
I'm, I'm not saying that at times if it's convenient, but I feel like if you're medically able, if you're not traveling, if you're
Right.
on the island, you should attend in person.
I agree, I would strike four.
Yep.
Is there a consensus to just strike that?
Anyone have any disagreements with that?
No. On that letter I, there's a typo. Members of the body must be physically present for public proceedings of public meeting location except, should be when authorized to participate by remote methods.
Yeah, I found a couple of things too, thank you.
You're welcome.
So should this, um, be available along with the bylaws, it should be not together, but I mean, if you look at one thing, it should be open.
Well, yeah, that's why-
It's going to go in the-
You wanted it known.
Right, reference.
To refer to the remote participation of a proceeding.
And attach somehow, right.
So it used to be that, um, was it, was it a state law that said that, you know, if you were, that you couldn't participate remotely? And then, of course, COVID happened and a lot of that changed. And then this new law came into a, effect where, okay, you can, you can attend a meeting remotely, but let's create a po-, you know, each entity should create a policy and say what is, what is okay and what isn't.
Yep.
When I used to, um, I attended meetings by phone because we didn't have Zoom years ago when I'd be in Florida. And you just, you had, you couldn't vote, obviously.
That's what I remember, you could attend remotely, but you could not vote.
Yeah.
Unless you, you could see your face on the screen now.
But we've, now, well, because since COVID.
Right.
Since COVID, you're allowed to, even if you dialed in and they can't see your face, you can still say.
Oh, I was told that you had to see my face the first time I zoomed in.
Yeah, I thought you had to be on Zoom, right?
You can't vote if we can't see your face.
You have to be, you have to see.
I don't know, that's-
You have to go.
Anyway.
I don't thi- I don't think it's in here, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't see why that would, because what if you're in a place where you can't zoom, but you can call in?
But you can call, yeah.
I don't see why.
Leave it alone.
Yes, just leave it the way it is, I think it's fine.
If someone's that sophisticated and technolo- technologically advanced where they can, they would take someone's voice and call in.
Exactly. If anyone wants to be me at these meetings.
Good on them, but yeah, I, I don't think we have to worry about that.
So we'll just do a final reading on this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. So now we're on to nine, new business. Nine A, high street sidewalk design.
I don't know a lot about this, other than we're in current, signed an agreement back in twenty nineteen to design something for a sidewalk on High Street.
Yeah. I mean, it definitely needs to be done, but this is-
But there are no sidewalks, I mean, they're falling into the road.
Yeah, they're becoming, they're becoming endangered.
Yep. I mean, they're all dangerous.
Well, I guess, I don't know, what do you want me to do with this? Just put it on the back burner until we get something?
There's nothing we can do now because the budget's already been done for this year, right, so.
Well, we're coming up on budget season, so we can, we can put it into the next budget, but yes, we've got what we could do right now.
There's something we can do right now.
I would think we would want to look into finding if there's grant money we can get to do some of this, all of it, because this is, this is a big number. Millie, what's your buy-in on this?
Personally, I feel that it needs to be done, but I think we have a lot going on. And with a lot of the stuff that we're doing, I feel that we don't have the proper equipment to, to keep up with a lot of the upkeep that we're, we're planning. Um, and I, I just feel like this, as hard as it may be, should go on the burner for, for a year or two until we can come up with a solid plan on how we're going to do the maintenance.
Well, I don't think, when we first discussed it, I don't think it was meant to be a right, um, of the current or today or
Right.
or next year project. I think we just wanted to get some option going, some plan going.
Right, because they were out here anyway, so let's just see how much it would cost.
I mean, it's such a-
I think it's great to get a, I think it's great to get a ballpark figure, but as you know, in, in a year's time, you're also going to see either a really big jump again. It's just like with the trucks and with, with the other work going on, prices are just shooting up so high, that this will give us a ballpark idea that, yes, it's going to be over a million dollars, but um, you know, it's going to be hard to place a true price tag on it until you're ready to do the work.
Right, but I mean, I, I felt that was a project that we might undertake in a few years after the downtown and the transfer station. I didn't think it was something that we were going to pursue in the next couple of years. That was my understanding.
I mean, in a perfect world, we could do it all at once, so we don't have to bring it through back out a second time, but yeah, this is, there's no way we're going to be able to come up with this kind of money before, yeah.
That can be added to the downtown project.
And covered by grant money.
Well, there still could be grant money.
Oh, I-
Because a lot of this is also meeting ADA requirements. And it's safety, so.
Am I reading it right? And this also includes paving the road?
Full width roadway pavement.
Yeah.
Yep.
So one of the other things to consider is, and I know maybe, you know, it's not, it's not the best choice because mobilizing is also expensive, but maybe break it into sections and do you know, the worst part of the sidewalk first. Maybe that's something that even, you know, you could do in town if it's a smaller scale, you may be able to get a interest from a contractor and we do have concrete out here. You know, so that's another thing to consider, kind of looking outside the box there.
I wonder if they consider, because right now it's, there's sort of a sidewalk on one side and then it switches over. Was this going to be one continuous sidewalk?
I, I don't, I'm not certain exactly where it was supposed to start. It says High Street, well, does that mean the entire from downtown all the way to the fountain?
That's what it looks like to me.
I think that we should, um, to me, the biggest, the worst part is from the Carver Cemetery to the, to the, uh, fountain. It's really falling apart there, it's a mess. Yeah.
Because I remember Andy saying, we could always look at half, doing half at a time.
Yep.
So.
I think if you take the paving out of it and if you were just going to do, say, from Harry Ross's road down that last section, that may possibly be something that we could get some interest in town. And use, you know, the concrete supplier in town to maybe even do it, build it out of concrete and then put a, a layer of pavement over it if you feel necessary, but you can also treat the concrete. Salt's the only thing that will ever hurt it.
Full width roadway pavement, so, okay, pavement over the side, all right, that's, I was thinking of something, that's making more sense. Yeah, I, we're going to have to look into more options on this one, because
Yeah, this is just the beginning.
I think you are going to have to do the whole High Street though at some point, right, like the sidewalk that people park on in Fourth July is not really sufficient at this point.
Some of that's going to be included on the downtown project, right?
I don't think so. All right, any other questions on that?
Nope.
No.
All right, may I make one suggestion, though, for we? Millie, you're the one that probably knows more about this stuff than any of the rest of us. I'd be interested to have your recommendation, looking at the total sidewalk package on the island, what needs to be done, your recommendation for what and when?
On the, on the what? I couldn't really hear you.
On sidewalks, we have a lot of sidewalks that are critical, the ones going to the school, there's a bunch of them.
Right.
Possible to get kind of a review from your perspective, then a suggestion on what needs to be done and when?
I can do that.
We, we have that sidewalk study that we can look at before I come in.
All right.
Yeah, because it, I mean, pretty much all, pretty much all our sidewalks need to be replaced or repaired or something at some point, so.
And Millie, I think is in the best position to, to give us some guidance on that.
Right.
Well, we know what happened to poor Tina the other day. And she went flying like Superman down by
Let's see, okay.
Well, she almost broke her ankle and she stowed herself all off.
In front of Dwayne Davis's house.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah. That sidewalk is treacherous.
Yes, it is.
She said, I was just like Superman.
Horrible, isn't it, Pam?
Yeah, it's bad, Ben.
And the one on High Street, I know somebody fell there, too, so.
Yep. Yeah.
Can I just quickly ask what this, this is on the back of a status report, you know what that is?
Discuss updated FSP and CAT plans to see what just would be in the CSD project, if funds are available later this winter.
What is that?
I don't know. It's back on the wooded and current status update.
Do you know what that is?
Right here.
Maybe they got a whole quote from a different account on the ours by accident.
I don't know, well. Magic can ask if she thinks it's important, she talks a brunt. Okay.
All right, we'll move on to nine B, Amber's Hill Park Proposal.
Righty. So the tax commission and So, the Parks Commission and Final Haven Land Trust and ICMS has formed a collaborative. We call ourselves the Ambrose Hill Collaborative. And, um, we want to, as you can see in the, uh, proposal, we want to redo the. Playground, uh, trail. ADA, ADA trail.
It won't be an ADA trail, but it'll be a more accessible.
A more accessible, right, and the ICMS is in trust, um, physical therapy. Um, anyway, that's just the whole proposal is here for you to look at. It would be all funded, not by taxpayer money, all funded by donations and grants. And I'm gonna let Kay and Linnell, I think Andrea Hogan is here to, um, also, she's the new ED for VLT. To throw in there. Way more information than I can keep in my small brain, but Kay, you, you know Terry, your present Terry, so.
I guess just, um, on the Parks Commission, each of us sort of adopt the park and Ambrose Hill is my park, so. Um, took it over from Danny Pixley. So we've been talking for a while that the playground needed an update. Um, there was some discussion about maybe making it a pre-canny because there's the new school playground, but there's nothing for younger kids. And, um, Patience Trainers also on the Parks Commission and she was talking about how, um, she would have some of her physical therapy people. Go out and use some of the, the footage that was there and we were like, wow, that would be really cool to incorporate something that's. For, um, the youngest kids, maybe the older population or anybody that's recovering from. Surgery or anything, have some sort of, whether their therapy equipment or fitness or, you know, maybe a little. Track or something. Um, Pam had Woodard and Curran go out and look at it just to give us a general idea of what, what could we be looking at? And they gave us some initial ideas, um, but they're too busy with the downtown plan. And, um, from when I lived in Yarlem, um, I knew some folks who were landscape architects there. Um, Terry Dewan, I thought was retired and sort of reached out and said, hey, do you know somebody who might be appropriate? And, um, he was interested and when I said, I thought you were retired, he said, well, if it's in a really wonderful place with really nice people, I'm interested. So, uh, we were in Yarlem for twenty-nine years and we knew Terry most of that time. His business has been super successful. He was the, what's on your letter had the Terrence J. Dewan and Associates, which he, he was. TJ DNA. He is retiring, he's, I believe, passing the business on to his employees. They're gonna be calling themselves. I think it was Viewshed. So as we go forward, there will be, it will say Viewshed also. But, um, anyway, uh, when I talked to him about it, he was interested. He's been out on Vinyl Haven. When was it that he was?
Did some work on the, uh, two thousand twelve comprehensive plan. He worked with, um. Not buying deal, buying somebody. Did some work on the comprehensive plan and I worked with him back then.
So he's familiar with Vinyl Haven and I think some of what he was talking about was like scenic. Viewshed places on the island and things like that. Um, so he's been out here, his wife. Once gave an organ conference at the Indian Church. Our kids took all their piano lessons from her. So anyway. I was pretty thrilled because he's very well-known, um, and has done a lot of award-winning work, the fact that they were interested in. Wanted to come out, so, um, they're gonna come on Monday and Tuesday of next week. Um, he's coming out, he's bringing someone from his office, they're gonna stay at our house, we'll put them up. I'm gonna take them all around and show them the site. Um, he wanted to have a community input. Meeting on Monday night, so we're kind of scrambling this.
The building, the, this room is reserved already for six-thirty on Monday night, uh, assuming that we give approval for the project. And, um, so Darlene has it on the calendar so that we can have the, hopefully get the word out for people to come. Uh, and then maybe do a Zoom. That's, we gotta figure out how we're gonna do that.
Could be recorded, I don't know how that works, so. Yeah, if he could present it in the meantime, I guess we'll just try to get the word out as best we can.
But to go back to Woodard and Curran, Brent, we did a walk through up there, um, last fall, spring. Yes, in the spring, before Marjorie, Marjorie was with us, but she wasn't, um, town manager at the time. She was representing VLT. And, um, Brent brought, uh, an associate would come from Wood and Curran. Who kind of designs things like what we were looking for and they sent a lovely proposal pro bono. They didn't charge us for their work, which was awesome. And Terry. When we told Terry, or I told Terry that Brent, or I told Brent, I guess, that, however, anyway, Terry. Said Brent was a good man and Brent said, well, you got a good guy with Terry. Um, so they know each other. And they're just kind of, just kind of working out that things will start to come together, you know? Um, and Terry suggests that they will use part of the, he'll look at the proposal that Woodard and Curran did for us and. Start working from that to.
Yeah, that'll help sort of generate the initial ideas, but his idea on, I think, Monday night was to. Show lots of pictures of other parks, sort of based on what Woodard and Curran had said, and we've had a Zoom meeting with him. Uh, the collaborative has, and we've talked about things we were interested in. So he just would love to show us stuff and get. Uh, feedback of thumbs up, thumbs down, you know, what people think, or specifically, there's definitely been discussion that. We don't want it to be just cookie cutter. We want it to look and feel like Vinyl Haven.
Right.
And bring in some of the, the quarrying history and all that kind of thing.
And Andrea, you have, um, something you want to add?
Sure, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I, uh, I'm thrilled to be here and nice to see all of you. Um, Vinyl Haven Land Trust is delighted to be part of this collaborative and part of this project and, and I want to start off by saying thank you. Uh, most specifically to Linnell and to Kay for, um, for really embracing, uh, this project and, and. Um, conceptualizing it from the beginning. Uh, I'm really, I'm really excited about it. Not only because of the collaborative nature of it, but, um, because, you know, as part of our strategic plan, we have. Uh, looked at and wanted to look at trails for, um, for mobit- people with mobility issues. Uh, it's an important. As our, as our communities age, it's important that we create spaces where people can get out there and. Continue to be active and, and moving and part of nature. Um, and we all understand how important that is, so we're, we're thrilled to be part of it. And to that, um, and understanding that, that funds are tight for everybody, everywhere. Uh, Vinyl Haven Land Trust would like to commit the initial, uh, seven thousand and K, maybe you have the exact number, but it's just a little over seven thousand. That will engage with Terry Dewan.
That's what's in here.
Yeah, thanks. We, we, we would like to commit that initial amount to pay for Terry and this, this first phase of planning.
You just had to say no to that.
No taxpayer dollars, I don't. One right there.
So, the meeting is that we've applied for grants.
Yep.
Um, we heard from a number of people that the fact of our collaborative of working to town, the medical center and the land trust. All together, that that's gonna make it like really attractive.
Yeah.
To any funding thing.
So, I'm guessing the first, part of the first phase is figuring out what the cost is gonna be.
What we wanna do, so we know how much that's worth.
Right, yeah.
And, and have pictures and be able to propose, this is what we wanna do.
Yep.
Whatever, which is what this phase one is all about, which I was like, well, great, but how do we pay Terry? And then. Between Linnell and Andrea, they still doesn't, they were like, you know, let's do it.
So you're having a meeting here Monday?
Monday, it's the way.
Six, six thirty?
Uh, six thirty day, yeah. Um, I think if we could get some younger parents in. That could talk about what they're want, or anybody who's interested, you know, um. You know, patience is a way, so we can't get, maybe we could get, um, Taylor, I don't know.
Some, well, Ken, Ken might be around. She would, she might have some input, but it's certainly a project that I wanted the playground. I've been trying to get. Something done up there for a long time, but it's so hard to.
Yeah.
Get things moving, so with all the, with all of us together, like we said, ladies are gonna do it.
Well. What, what else do you need from the board?
We just need to, the Parks Commission is asking the board to approve.
Because it's town property.
Where it's town property.
It's a huge unused asset.
And the Parks Commission is part of the town, so.
To really have it used and, and part of it is to increase parking so that people in parking here aren't taking up.
Spots for them, yep.
And we don't know how that will happen yet, but that's part of what the goal is.
It's just such a great location for this because it's close to town.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it's a park that I use from my house. I can walk there and walk, there's so many trails, I can walk for an hour. But it's just, it would be a great asset for people of all ages right in town and the, the park itself is just beautiful. And as you said, it's very much underused.
So it would just be a motion to support the Ambrose Hill Collaborative.
Not sure we need anything at this point, do we? Well, I know, I'll, I'll make a motion that we.
Well, because it's town property, I think there should just be a motion to support i- in general.
I, yeah, all right.
The collaborative and the project.
I make a motion that we. Give our approval, support behind the Ambrose Hill Collaborative for their work to be done with. TJ DNA and what's the future name? Viewshed, um, for their work with the Ambrose Hill Park and Playground Plan.
Right, I don't know.
Then we're gonna second that.
Second.
Yeah. I don't know exactly where I fall in this, because where I'm on the Parks Commission, I guess I'm still, you know.
Fine, then you abstain, all those in favor.
I don't know if I have to abstain, but you know.
Well, you just did, and it's still got approved, so there you go.
Alrighty. Great, thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for bringing this to us.
Thank you, Andrea, very much.
Sounds like a great idea, so.
For being here and for the first donation to proceed, that's great. Thank you, VLT.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Linnell.
Yeah. I'm looking forward to this.
I know, you'll have fun.
All right. Move to ten, reported town manager.
I just have a couple of things. I did, uh, talk with Terry, um, Terry Waters today, finally. And her, uh, for, for the airstrip, please?
Uh, yes.
Sorry, uh, Terry Waters is, um, Kevin Waters' widow.
Okay.
And, um, her chief financial officer was also there, Ken Carl. And it's a very good conversation and they want to get moving, uh, on, you know, getting another lease in place. You know, I, I don't really understa- I don't know what happened back in, I know that this draft lease was presented to the board. And September fifteenth of twenty twenty.
Yep.
The minutes have a little bit of discussion and then it said that, um, they would like. The lease to go to the attorney for review before it's signed. But then I looked, I looked in all the invoices that we have for Drummond Woodsum. Would it have gone to somebody else?
I don't think so.
I couldn't find any emails that were sent. I couldn't find any evidence that it ever went to a, an attorney, so I don't, does anybody remember? Anything?
I remember that we were presented with it and we asked, we like asked a few things to be struck because we weren't gonna basically. They were kind of asking, in my opinion, asking for subsidy on their air, their rates, basically because they were going up. And they wanted the town to pay the difference so they wouldn't lose business essentially, you know?
Well, when this draft went to the board, it was, it, the minutes just said, let's send it to our attorney for review.
And that, from all we can tell, didn't happen.
So, um, I, I know I, um, Donald asked if he could look at them, this latest. Redline version, I sent it out, but should I just put this on the agenda for the next meeting to look at this again?
Yep.
This version, okay. And I also sent it to Terry and, uh, her associate, Ken Carl. And they were gonna review it again.
Okay.
So it's a start and I felt really very positive about the conversation. It was a Zoom meeting, so. Ken, I don't know, but we'll just start, start from there and.
Yeah.
See what we can get.
Yep.
Um, oh, just a note, I got a call from the First and they're increasing our interest rate on all of our accounts to one point one. Which is, I mean, it's always good when we get more interest, right?
What did you get on your? I'm getting three percent on mine now.
Three now?
Yep. Just went up after that last Fed meeting when they raised the rates. I get two more, I'm basically five, it's a fidelity. Maybe we want to start looking into.
I'm getting three at Discover.
Maybe we want to revisit. Our relationships with our banks, see if we can find higher rates.
Well, I've started to have conversations with people that I've dealt with in the past. From Machias, I had worked with a woman named Elsa and I've talked with her and I asked her to, you know, tell me what you got. You know, let's see if we can, you know, move things around.
Because there's no reason we should be getting, even that seems low right now, like, because we do have large cash balances in some of these banks that would. At three percent would be significant interest.
Agreed.
So.
We do have limitations, you know, uh, we can't invest in anything, um, risky, you know.
Right, but we do have, do we have just checking accounts? Do we have savings accounts that we like transfer money between? I guess is my question.
Well, there's a big, there were two big CDs that Andy had and we still. The CD at Machias doesn't mature until twenty twenty-four, so there's not much I can do with that. But my conversations with Elsa were such that, you know, what can you do for me? You know? Do I really need to wait until twenty twenty-four? You know, I have a relationship with her from the past, so, you know, she said that she would look into. You know, what we can do, but right now we're kind of locked into that CD until twenty twenty-four. And, um, I don't remember what the interest rate was on that. And then there was another big CD with the first and I, when that matured, I put it into. Um, a more liquid account.
Okay.
Because I felt like we were ready to move things around.
Yep.
You know, and try to get better rates on things. Um, the Mary Talbot money, I did move into a six-month CD. Um, just to get that out of, um, this big commingled. You know, all the trust funds and all the reserve funds are kind of in one big pot, if you will, with those two big CDs. And then I, I'm having to pro-rate, well, now I'm doing it monthly. Um, I've, I'm having to just pro-rate the interest monthly to each reserve fund and each trust. Um, and I've gotten the cemetery trust funds moved out. That already had a, a separate checking account. But some of the cemetery funds were in with this big, um, commingled, um, investment. So the cemetery's out and the, um, the Mary Talbot is out. I'd still like to move the Harriet Chatfield Trust Fund. Um, because I feel like they're different from the reserve funds, you know, they're treated a little bit differently. They're, you know, it's money that was left to us and wills and.
Yeah.
You know, anyway.
Yep.
Um, so that's where I am, I'm, you know. I can't say that I'm moving really quickly, but I'm.
Chipping away.
I'm chipping away, just like a lot of things, I'm chipping away, but I did have conversations with, uh, Elsa from Machias. I'm kind of hopeful that she'll come back with some good products.
Is that typically how? Not just this town government is, but large excess cash or fund, reserve funds are usually placed in CDs. Is that typically how it's done?
Hmm, yes.
Okay.
Um. Any sort of higher. Any sort of higher risk investment or, you know, moving money into, um. Uh, what am I trying to say?
Well, I know we're not allowed to have like investment accounts and trade within stock market and stuff like that. I, I get that part of it, I'm just wondering. Now with savings, interest rates going up, we could keep our cash in a more liquid form, as you mentioned, and still get a good rate. Whereas when we lock in these CD, even the CD rates that I'm seeing, like, yeah, they've gone up, but like, it's still like a year you have to, and it's, then it's only like three and a half percent. May, maybe they've gone up since the last Fed meeting, but.
And we still have money in Camden, too.
Their rates haven't gone up at all.
Um, but, yeah, well, you saw, I moved two million out of that.
Yeah.
Put it over into the First.
Okay, I.
So.
I would be, I think we should just cut ties with Camden, but we can discuss that at a later time.
It's just so much easier to take our deposits down.
I, I understand that, but I guess then we just link it to another account and just transfer it over as soon as we can.
Yeah.
The rates are.
Well, if you're using the money, I mean, if you're using the money down there on a weekly or monthly basis, then it's not like you're keeping it.
Long term.
Burning amount of time, right?
Well, yeah.
So Camden National, is it just more of a?
It's a place for us to do our deposits. I mean, they were doing the remote deposits, but I, frankly, I found them very cumbersome. We did it in Chabig as well because it was so difficult. I mean, I, I'd had to pay. Somebody for two hours work just to go over to the bank and deposit money and come back, so we did remote depositing, but. The remote depositing with the First seemed very, very cumbersome and, um, I don't know if you've ever, did you ever have to do?
No, I didn't know what to do.
And it just takes a long time. When we have a bank here that we still have an account with. So to me, it was just easier to take them, deposit the money there. And then I can just keep track of the balances and transfer the money out of Camden when I need to. Um, it's just so much easier and, and it saves time, you know, to me.
No, I think that makes sense.
No, that, that's fine, as long as we're not keeping large deposits there.
Does, does Camden restrict the town on the amount that can be transferred at one time?
Transferred.
Leukoidly to another, for another financial institution? I know they do it personal, I mean, they, they limit it to two thousand dollars a transfer.
That's really low.
What? And they probably charge you to do it, so.
No, they.
No, I, I transferred money. I have, yeah.
Well, I just transferred a bunch of money recently and I'm, now they didn't let anything, I tried to do twenty-five hundred, they wouldn't do that.
I don't know.
I don't have a council funds, I don't know.
Well, as long as we're. Looking into getting better rates, then I'm, I'm fine.
Again, I can't say that I'm ac, acting very quickly, you know, I feel like I should have already been on top of it, but I'm. I'm having these close conversations and I'm, um. Looking at our investments and, you know, trying to do, trying to move it into different and higher interest accounts.
Okay. It's real money.
So the Chatfield, um, account, that's an endowment fund, right?
It's a trust fund for the, uh, library.
Right, I was on the board when we got that money.
And it was accepted at a town meeting and there's a little blurb about how it can be used.
Right. Okay.
It was, yeah, so it. It's so used at, I think at the, not the maybe commission, but the direction of the library trustees or something like that. Like, like if we had to do the roof.
Right.
You know, there's, there's some money there.
It was in an emergency, if the, if the roof blew off, they could use some of the money.
I can't remember the words, but it's, it's for, you know, capital, uh, work and, yeah. Or some, you know, if we needed a new furnace, I don't know.
I would think if the roof blew off, that would be an insurance claim.
Well, we, you know, we were looking at it from all angles. I just remember when we got the, the money that. You know, we had, we had a big meeting about what we were gonna do with it and I just remembered that was what people wanted was to have it in a, as a type of endowment so that.
Yes.
People put a step into it to. Not people, but the town.
It's not, it's not for operating.
Yeah, if you're chipping away, Marge, then.
No, I think you're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, uh, main municipal health trust is gonna go up four point five percent in January. I checked in the budget, it looks like you put in a, um, estimated ten percent increase, so I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
The health insurance.
Okay, they're going up, wait, sorry, they're going up four point?
On our program, they're going up four point five percent. And. Income protection plan, which we don't pay for, is going up four point nine. If people want that, they have to pay for it themselves.
So premiums are going up four and a half percent?
Correct.
Okay, and we had planned for ten, so, hey, look at that.
Look at us.
And we already talked about the, that Knox County is looking for housing, but you said they found a place?
He was last, at least on the email, was that he had asked for us to. Use our local contacts, but he was gonna also put the deputy into, in touch with the real estate agent, so that was the last, I mean.
Okay.
I'm not aware of anything available. If I did, if I'd known, I would get my mother into it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
I mean, I, it's unfortunate, cause yes, would be great if we could have a deputy move out here, live here. I, unfortunately, it's the same problem that.
Everybody.
Everyone else has, is finding a place to live.
I had no luck.
Unless they. You sold your house too soon. No, no, I sold it in time.
And next meeting, we'll also have those, um, two motions related to the executive session that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
That'll be.
Yep.
Marjorie, um, could, I know the other day we were talking about the, um, the cruise quarters of the, down the, uh, terminal. Is there any chance that you could have a discussion with whoever is in, uh, the powers that be, that they would let the town? Have that for, for that use for deputy or, I mean, it just seems the place is empty. I don't know what it's like in there.
They're gonna tear it down and make more parking.
That's what I heard.
That's what I heard. That's what I heard.
And I think it's such a waste.
Tear it down and put up a parking lot.
We don't need it.
That's what I heard.
But, so I think if you could.
Yes, let's, we should definitely reach out about that, cause we can use that building.
I have no direct knowledge of the plans. I just have anecdotal, you know, rumors.
Which is what we all have.
Yeah.
Well, we had, when we sold the house, that was what was meant.
Let's, let's look into that because that would be, that would maybe, wouldn't be perfect for the deputy, but.
Isn't that a double wide?
I've never even, I've never been in.
I don't know, I don't.
I thought it was double wide.
It can hurt to look into.
And if that makes it easily move to double wide.
I don't, I don't know.
It's probably not what the deputy would want to move their family to.
But you know what, it doesn't, you know.
It can hurt to ask.
If we could have it available.
Are you talking, sorry, are you guys talking about the house, the Bay State Road House?
No, we're talking about the cruise quarters of the ferry.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I was so confused there.
That is crazy.
What are you talking about?
I was gonna tell you, the Bay State one is definitely, it is a double wide, but it's, it's definitely a tear down.
Oh, no, no, no. I can only imagine.
Carry on, carry on.
Do you know anyone who's looking to rent a three-bedroom, two-bath?
Top turn, but I wanted them.
No, but. Yeah, that's gonna be tough.
That's what I mean, like, we want a deputy out here full-time, that there could be an opportunity to have one there, but it's gonna come down to housing, sounds like, so. Alright.
Maybe we can buy the double wide and then rent it for.
I, that might not be what they need to get out, get them out here, but.
Moving on.
Yes.
You have more, Marjorie?
No, I don't have any.
Alright, then we want to, eleven report of members.
I, we haven't finished signing yet.
I don't have anything.
I have a question.
Millie, thanks for taking care of the trash pickup at the cemetery. The next day it was done.
That's how we like to do things.
How you roll? No, I think I'm good.
Alright, then I move adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody, for attending in person and online.
Bye, Millie.
Have a good night.
You know, um, the other day, we were on a walk, I went on a walk and from, um.